Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes. And Donna, are you leading this item?
Hi, good evening. Mayor Flagler and fellow council members. This evening, myself and Recreation Manager Jamie Chu will be tag teaming this item with her leadership, so.
Okay, so I will turn it over to you then Donna as director and then you bring in Jamie.
Sure. We do have a PowerPoint that we're gonna walk you through. The proposal this evening.
We haven't started yet.
Thank you, mystery person.
Thanks for catching that, Donna's being very formal. Okay, I think everybody is here, and so let's get started. City Clerk, whenever you're ready.
Ready.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I will call the Los Altos City Council Study Session of Tuesday, June 22, 2021, to order at 6:01 PM. City Clerk, can you please call the roll and establish quorum?
Yes, Councilmember Li Ying.
Here, I don't see the Vice Mayor on, just to let everyone know. But I'm here.
No, thanks for that, Councilmember Li Ying, and you are correct.
Don't see her yet either.
I had problems logging on, so I don't know if it's a problem.
So then let's take a break and see if we can reach the Vice Mayor, and then we'll resume once we have the full council present. Thank you.
Vice Mayor's on, Mayor. Now I don't see the Mayor.
Okay, so let's do, before we go back to recording, is everybody here one, two? Yes, okay, so we'll just continue, and Vice Mayor?
Here.
So we're going to, we're going to continue where we left off. We realized that the Vice Mayor hadn't called in, and so we were about to move to the next agenda item, which is confirming quorums. So City Clerk, can you please call the roll and establish quorum?
Yes. Councilmember Li Ying.
Here.
Councilmember Meadows.
Here.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ianander.
Here.
And Mayor Flagler.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, you have a full council. All council members are present.
Wonderful, thank you, City Clerk. Next, we will move to public comment on the only agenda item. This is a study session. For those members of the public listening in, this is your opportunity to comment on the study session item, which is the Park Ordinance for Commercial Activity. So City Clerk, do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, so far I see two members. The first one was Frank Martin, followed by Roberta.
So let's give each speaker three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Martin?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
It's always good to have a study session because you're out of the public eye and can, can kind of do things in a less formal way, so I certainly appreciate that. But let's look at the history here, the, the, the public in general in Los Altos, over ninety percent of the people favor green space over every other priority. We had a Measure C that failed by a small margin, forty-seven percent to, or forty-seven point something or other to whatever. But that was aimed at basically protecting our parks in a way that involved leases and more complications than just simply protecting our parks. I'm quite sure that if people were asked about commercializing our parks, there would be a very broader negative response. We recently took a poll about Bocce Ball at Grand Park, four hundred and thirty-two people, which was like eighty percent of the, I don't remember, way more than eighty percent of the people were against bocce ball at Grand Park because it took away green space. Now, it appears that there may be a flaw in our process, in our policy, that basically says, you know, leaves commercial activity kind of in a vague way. But I can assure you that if you actually did some outreach, you would find out that the public does not want commercial use of, of parks in our city. We have too little space, and we certainly don't want to have it commercialized. We did at one time have a French school at Grand Park. We fought very long and hard to get rid of it. Measure C would have prevented it from ever coming back again. So I think it's okay to have programs like the Skyhawks, which the Rec Department runs for the benefit of residents because it's a recreational activity. But I just, I'm basically opposed to the idea of giving more power to the city manager, which this policy does. As I read it, it basically says that the city manager can do anything he wants to issue permits for commercial use of our parks. And I, I'm really against that, and I believe if you ask the public to weigh in, you'll find that the vast majority of people would agree with me. This is just a bad use of our parks. We don't have enough use of it as it stands. I walk my dog to Grand Park every day. In the summertime, the soccer kids are on pretty much twenty-four seven as it is, but that's, that's a kid's thing, that's, I'm all in favor of that. But I don't want to see commercial groups come in and use our parkland. In Santa Clara, for example, I have a senior center, and the only people who can use it are residents of Santa Clara. Why can't we just simply rethink what we're doing? And if anything, strengthen the current policy so that commercial use is actually, you know, not allowed beyond what the current norms are. Thank you so much for your time. I will be listening to see, you know, what conclusions you reach.
Thanks, Frank.
Our next speaker is Roberta.
Oh, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, hi. So I agree that, you know, we do have some commercial activities in our parks now. We do, you know, have some soccer and baseball. But basically, the Parks and Recs Department just did a, spent twenty-five thousand dollars on a survey with Godby. The top used by, the, the residents, and it was a scientific survey, said, people want open spaces. They want to be able to sit on a bench in the park. They want green space. They want to be able to walk on our trails. And I understand that, you know, with COVID, that there was like a karate classes, you know, of, of commercial private people using the parks. And I think that, you know, if we open it up, we could have hairdressers, we could have nail salons, we could have, you know, Facebook or Google coming saying, I want to, you know, rent out the park for the entire summer. So I think that we should have a policy that prohibits commercial use of the park as much as we possibly can. We have less park space per capita of any city in the town. As our population grows, park space is even more important for mental health, for physical health. And I, I do know that we do have ordinances on the book, nine point two four lays out parameters of what can't happen in the park. And I think that you do need to do community outreach because this sort of came out of the blue and the residents had no idea what was going on. So it's a good thing you're having the study session, so people in the town can become aware of what's going on in our parks. So they're very precious. I know that Nisa was on the Parks and Rescue Commission many years, so was Jonathan. So I assume that they understand the activities that go on the park and, you know, commercial uses to be limited as much as possible. Thank you.
Thanks, Roberta.
Madam Mayor, there's a, Teresa Morris, has her hand raised?
Yes. Go ahead, Teresa.
Good evening, thank you for taking my call. I just briefly wanted to make a comment about this particular topic, and I'm glad you're having a study session. I am on the Park and Rec Commission. I'm not calling in as a Park and Rec Commissioner. I'm calling in as a resident. And what I would say is, of all the years that I've lived here, the one thing I've noticed is that most residents do seem to prefer to have the parks available when they want them available. The other is, I'd really like to understand what sorts of commercial activity have been going on in the parks that have brought this forward to needing to be discussed. I think it would be great, as a resident, to understand that a little bit more before we decide what direction to go. Then the other is, we have a new city manager coming in. And I'm slightly concerned until we get to know the city manager, what direction his thinking might be, if it's settled around the one that has been in the paper or if you're still looking at other candidates. But at any rate, a new city manager, I think it would be good if we had a little time to get to know our city manager, make sure it's their good fit for our city before we give them power to make a decision such as this. And then again, as a resident, not as a commissioner, I would like to recommend that maybe it goes to the Park and Rec Commission first as a discussion so that residents have a chance to weigh in on this. So I think that's it. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Teresa. I don't see any more hands. Andrea?
Neither do I, neither do I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So then let's bring it back to the next agenda item, which is our discussion item, the Park Ordinance for Commercial Activity. And I will turn it over to Director Legge to lead on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Flagler, fellow council members. At this time, I'd like to introduce Jamie Chu, who will guide you through this study session discussion.
All right, good evening, Mayor Flagler and City Council members. Happy to start my presentation. Just hold on one moment. All right, so before you this evening is a discussion on our park ordinance, and it is for a study session this evening. As an overview, the current ordinance does not provide a process or authorize staff to create and approve commercial activity in Los Altos. And that is why we are bringing this forward at this time to have a discussion. Right now, we are seeing unauthorized commercial use occurring in our parks. And we've seen a dramatic increase during the COVID-19 pandemic. As we outlined in the staff report, basically, the outdoor space was identified as a safer pace, excuse me, safer space to offer programs. And so we did see a dramatic increase for various types of programs. It could be noticed additional soccer programs, some fitness programs. Those are just some examples. And as some of the callers mentioned, we did notice a karate group that was using Lincoln Park as well. So those are just snapshots and samples of what we have noted over the past year during the pandemic. And looking a little bit further, defining commercial activity is an activity led by a private organization or vendor that is specifically for profit. And as I mentioned in some of the examples that we've noted over the past year during the pandemic, that can include camps, youth or adult classes, or fitness bootcamps. This is just a small example, but it could include others as well. What is staff trying to accomplish? And that is specifically to coordinate a fair and safe process and access through an approval process. Essentially, for those groups that want to use the park space, we want to ensure that they have proper licensing and insurance. And as we've kind of heard from some of the public this evening, we do want to manage a basically balanced access between general public use and commercial use. And basically also to give us the opportunity to enforce this as well. What are the current processes that we have in place? Those would include facility rentals, and this would include both indoor and outdoor. Examples of our indoor spaces would be Garden House, the Lacey Los Altos Youth Center, Grant, whether it's the multipurpose or the classrooms, and also spaces at the new Los Altos Community Center. Examples of the outdoor spaces would include Patriots Corner, which is on the side of Garden House, and the Grant Picnic Area currently. We do have a process for athletic field rentals and a brokering process, and this would include access to the Hillview Baseball and Soccer Fields, in addition to Grant and Rosita as well. For those activities, the city currently has a contract instructor process for those either individuals or organizations or businesses that are contractually in partnership with the city to offer a variety of recreation activities. This is not a specific permit process, but this allows the city to offer, to offer a variety of activities and programs to the community. So what are we looking at doing? What we're currently proposing is an amendment to the park ordinance to create a permit application process for commercial activity, specifically to provide either the city manager or an assigned designee to create and implement that application process. And we created this to allow for flexibility should conditions change in the future. We thought it is important to note that in the park ordinance, this particular amendment would not affect the special event permit process administered by the Police Department. As far as the anticipated fee structure, and we would follow the current tiers that we have for the other processes that we have in place. And we're currently looking at these recommended tiers for commercial, whether they are resident or non-resident, and then possibly a nonprofit, both resident and non-resident. And the rates are currently listed in a per hour. Possible options, as we look and take your questions and open the discussion, there are a variety of options that we can take, and we are currently looking for feedback and direction from council. Specifically for the park ordinance, one of the options would be to outline and specify that process in the park ordinance. What currently staff is recommending is to amend the park ordinance to authorize staff to create and implement a permit process. Another option could be to specify commercial activity to recreation-based in our city parks. And an additional option would be to prohibit all commercial activity in city parks. And that actually concludes our presentation. Not only myself, but also our current facilities coordinator, William Wells, who has also been an instrumental part in our facility rental program and field rental process, and has seen firsthand some of the activities that have been happening in our parks during the COVID-19 pandemic. We are all available, in addition to Director Legge, to answer any questions and open the discussion at this time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Chu. And as you said, this is a study session. Staff is bringing this item to council to get our feedback and hear our questions. And so I do want to thank you for being proactive and reacting to something that staff observed happening in our community. And so with that, we will follow the normal process. We will start with questions from council, and then we will go into the discussion and thoughts and feedback on this proposal and the different recommendations from staff. So who would? Councilmember Weinberg, I see your virtual hand. And just so all council members know, I have a lot of boxes in front of me. So if you'd like to ask a question or make a comment, please use your virtual hand. Councilmember Weinberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, staff, for bringing this to our attention and for the report just now. Also, thank you very much for asking the long list of questions that I submitted over the weekend. I really appreciate that. I really only have one question based on the report, and that's, when would a commercial activity be, be, when would someone qualify for an hourly rate as opposed to being considered an instructor where they're splitting revenue with the city?
Thank you, Councilmember Weinberg. That's a great question. Initially, when we do see some of these commercial activities, and as an example, most of the time it's been some type of recreation-based program. So karate was definitely one that we saw in Lincoln Park. We've seen camps and having, playing lots of games and activities down at Shout Park. Usually our first, usually what we first do is actually approach them to see if they want to partner with the city and actually offer some of these activities and programs in partnership with the Recreation Department so that the community as a whole could take part in this activity. As we found, some are interested in partnering with us, and some do go the contractual partnership route. But some prefer not to, and that is why we are looking to do this type of setup so that we would, they would, it would help support some of those local businesses that may, and those are some that actually reached out because, so their inside space during the pandemic was not appropriate for them to offer program, excuse me, programs. So they wanted to explore some outdoor space. So that was our idea to help facilitate some of those things. But usually, our first option is we offer the contractual partnership route first.
Thank you, Ms. Chu.
Thank you. Councilmember Meadows.
Thank you. I agree. I think it's very helpful that this has been brought forward, so I appreciate that. So this might seem like a simple question, but I suspect that it's not. So how do we really know, how do we determine whether a request for park usage is from a resident or not? So for example, a class, the instructor might not be a resident, and some of the class may be, and some not, you know. So, so what, what sort of, how do we determine whether it's a resident requesting use or a non-resident?
Thank you, Councilmember Meadows. That is another great question. And that is part of the reason why staff wanted to put together this type of process. Even with our contract instructor partnership, there is a lengthy interview process, so to speak, where we ensure that they have the proper insurance, that they have the right clearances, and that they have the right certifications for some of the activities that they want to offer. And in addition, they're required to fill out an application. And as an example, let's say that in our facility rental process, someone wanted to take advantage of our nonprofit rate. We do require basically their 501(c) paperwork to be on file in order for them to qualify for that. So in answer to your question, we would look at verification to make sure that they would qualify for the specific rate that they are applying for. And also too, we want to ensure that the groups that are utilizing our park spaces, that they are also going through this process to make sure that they have the right things in place to be able to offer those programs.
Thank you. And I have a second question, sort of as a follow-up to that. I don't know if you could, well, you don't have to put the slide back up, but you showed the, the fee structure, or proposed, or start a straw man for a fee structure, let's put it that way. And part of it was, you know, resident or not, and, or nonprofit or not. And, you know, have you considered, there, there wasn't very much differential. It, it all seemed, you know, there was a little bit of a bump here and there. And maybe we'll get to this more so in the discussion, but have you considered having a different, or maybe a more defined fee structure? So for example, ah, good, thank you, that'll help. Just, just pull it up. Don't make me try to remember. Thank you. So for example, if you had an instructor who wanted to hold a class, and, and they got a couple hours of time, and they had fifty people there, but they're, they're paying a relatively low rate for what their commercial input, you know, could be. And so I wonder if you've considered, I'm sorry, I can't actually see the table. But if you've seen some, if you've thought about other ways for the fee structure that might incent individual resident uses or lower-scale residential uses versus higher-scale commercial uses? I don't know, can anyone else see the table? Here we go, okay. Yeah, so this is your proposal, but what else have you considered in terms of fee structure to get at? You know, like, one resident could be holding a class for fifty people, and that cost becomes very, very small to them to rent the, our park space versus one resident who's having a birthday party for some four-year-olds. You know, so what else have you looked to tease out in the fee structure?
No, absolutely. That's another great question. So we took a look, the City of Mountain View has a similar commercial activity ordinance where they actually have, it's a fifteen dollar an hour, and they have a maximum of up to, I would have to double check, but I think it's up to forty participants. They do take a look at size. I think that would be great feedback to get so that we can make sure that the, the tier structure or the policy that we potentially put in place would represent what we think would be best to manage that balance between commercial use and with, with general use as well. We wanted to follow the, the tiers that we currently have in place, which we do have a commercial tier. We do distinguish between residents and non-residents, and we do currently have nonprofit. We took a look at a few others, City of Gilroy as well. And there was a range, and so we tried to kind of fall in the middle of that, but definitely open to suggestions to make. What we put forward can be the best, can allow us to find that best balance.
Right, and so my, using example, kids' birthday parties doesn't probably apply here because that would not be, that would not require a permit, right?
So it, it depends, if someone wanted to go out and utilize the park space, they would absolutely be able to do so. They may choose to go our They may choose to go our facility rental route for an indoor or potentially an outdoor. So it would be a slightly different process that they would possibly follow.
Right. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Meadows. Councilmember Liang.
Thank you for the presentation. Greatly appreciate it. So when you approached these businesses that have been operating on our, our park space, was it something that they just knew about? Or did they fail to have, you know, time to go follow up? Or what is it that they did not understand? And why did they not understand our process?
That is a great question, Councilmember Liang. It, it varied. Some individuals or organizations know to look out for a process. And so some have called into our Recreation Admin Office to inquire about what permit or process they would need to follow. But I will say there are some that probably knew they should follow a process, but chose to not and simply went out to use the park space. And that is part of the reason why we want to create a process and have a mechanism for managing this type of use so that for those that choose to not follow that process, that we would have a mechanism to inform them that this is what they would need to do in order to continue, continue to offer the program they want to offer. So it is a combination of those that know and are willing to follow the process and then those that simply do not want to follow the process and simply go out to use the space regardless of when staff has let them know, okay, you need to follow a process here. And I know Will has, William Wells has gone out to inform them. And some were very open and amenable to that, and others were not interested in trying to follow that process.
So is our prohibited use not clear enough that you could enforce it? That's what I'm hearing. So is that what I'm hearing?
That is correct. The way that, at least the verbiage in the current park ordinance, we're looking to amend it so that it is more clear and provides that mechanism and process.
So why aren't we strengthening our prohibited use ordinance that we have in place?
If I remember correctly, that is the ordinance that we're looking to amend because right now it does, the ordinance says that commercial activity, if it's permitted, might be, would be allowed. But it does not specify, it doesn't authorize currently staff to have a mechanism or process to actually do that.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Kildare.
Yeah, and Councilmember Liang, and to staff, what I think is being asked, what if the council wishes to just totally prohibit commercial activities in our parks? And that is purely in the hands of the council majority. Staff is offering, this is a suggested approach. If you wish to allow for limited commercial use, that's why we're having a study session. Thank you for bringing that up.
And I think if you could bring, bring up the options again, that would be great.
Yes.
And when does this plan, when do you plan to have this go in front of the Parks Commission? Because I remember when we had changes in municipal code, it did come before the Parks Commission. When did you anticipate it going before the Parks Commission?
If I could, Mayor, I can address that.
Go ahead, Ms. Legge.
Thank you. Councilmember Liang, we were advised by our legal counsel to discuss that particular option here at this study session. It is up to the council if they would like it to go, be vetted through the Parks and Recreation Commission. But again, we wanted to start here for this conceptual discussion.
Okay, just getting a better understanding of what your intent was and why it didn't go that way first. Because I think when I was on the Parks Commission, normally it went there first. And then it also provided input to council as to the recommendations that the Parks Commission had. So I was just curious as to why we were doing it this way.
Excuse me, Mayor.
So, Mr. Kildare, I see the city attorney with her hand raised. So I want to go to the city attorney and then I'll come to you.
So to answer Councilmember Liang's question, this was, this was a discussion that we had with staff about what were the options. And so we recommended this study session because depending on where the council's direction was, it could be, we don't want to even do this, so why even go to park? But also to give everybody some direction of really, what will you be taking? What you want park to review? So that's why we're here and not just bringing an ordinance to you without any park input.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you. That's what I was going to say.
Thank you.
Any more questions, Councilmember Liang?
One. At what point does a contractual obligation then turn into a lease agreement? Because we're talking about facilities as well. And then, you know, at one, some points, a program then becomes a lease agreement. And I'd like to understand that because that is a concern that was brought, that have, has been brought to councils in the past. On, they were concerned about businesses that was profiting off of public land. And so my concern is, at what point? Because then the public didn't have a chance to weigh in. At what point do these permit agreements then turn into use agreements that then have not even gone through the public or to council? That's my question.
So I see the city attorney with her hand raised again. So I do want to go to her to address this.
You're muted.
The permit for using the city's park and recreational facility should never turn into a lease. Even when we've had joint use agreements, maybe like with the library, I believe we have a joint use with them because they manage it. But even if it was a joint use agreement or it was some sort of shared use agreement with the city, all of those agreements would have to be approved by the council at a public meeting. So there should not be any permits, use permit for park and rec facilities that turn into lease agreements. I know we've had some agreements with some of the schools. And, but I believe those were just use agreements, not leases, or they were licenses. I know we do try to make them licenses instead of leases. So, and if you could give me an example, that might help. But they should not, without public process, some sort of permit to use park and rec facilities should never turn into a longstanding lease unless the city council approves that. So it would always have the public input process.
I don't want to start identifying programs now, but thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, city attorney. So I will go. It's, I'm looking at the time. Vice Mayor Enander, please go ahead.
Sure, just a couple of quick things. So I understand that the sense is that we do not have a strong enough ordinance to stop people from doing this if they don't want to go through the joint involvement with the staff. My second, so just, that's, and I see Ms. Legge nodding her head, so I got that part right. Thank you. So for those who have, and thank you for the, the nice explanation, Jamie, on the facility rentals and the athletic fields. I want to talk about the contract stuff. The contract instructors are all of those things normally. And I want to go back a couple of years to when life was normal. Were all of those the things that were in our Parks and Recreation brochure that used to go out and that we, we handled the registration for? And my understanding is if we handled the registration, that I thought those were on a, either a fee sharing percentage or something. So I'm puzzled, do we have contract relationships where we are charging people by the hour for something outside of that Parks and Rec brochure program? And if so, what are they?
No, Vice Mayor Enander, that's a great question. So yes, you are correct that the contract is on a revenue percentage share. And so as far as partnership, there aren't, and I'm recalling, I do not believe we have those that would be based on an hourly rate for a contract instructor.
Okay. And the last question, so we can have, moving to the mayor's questions and discussion, is do we have a sense that the folks who were out there would want to continue to do what they were doing even when maybe what drove them there was the pandemic? And when life is back to normal, they'll go back to other facilities?
That is another great question. And I think for a little while, my, my sense is that use of outdoor spaces will, or at least the desire to be outside, I think will be with us for a little while. There is definitely, even with our own contract instructors, that they have actually liked the opportunity to be outdoors. So I think having this type of process and mechanism would be a benefit to facilitate management of that.
But you would be normally able to control where those people are going and what they're doing because you already have a contractual relationship. You already have a fee-sharing relationship. You can say, you know, well, here's your, your classroom. You can be in the classroom at Grant Park. And if you want to go outside, here's the parameters. So you have that ability right now.
That is correct.
Thank you. That's all I have right now, Mayor.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. And I'll be quick because some of my questions have already been asked. I will pick up on the demand question that the Vice Mayor asked, whether or not in talking to these private groups that have used our parks during the COVID-19 pandemic, if they have indicated that they would be interested in continuing to use our parks.
Vice Mayor Flagger, if I can answer your question.
Go ahead.
Yes, a few of the groups that have come over, especially some of the youth-serving groups have interest, especially during the summertime. And I know even like last week, I've ran into a couple of new groups at Shout Park and stuff. So I think definitely during the summertime, there's going to be interest in organizations coming out and utilizing our park spaces. And those that have actually gone through a permit process with us, some of them have expressed, I would say two or three of them have expressed interest in staying at the parks.
Thank you. And then based on our current usage of our open space in our parks, what does the availability of our park space really looks like to accommodate all these other commercial uses? Because I think at least one public speaker said, and I agree, we have general use, which is just our residents using our parks. We have some organized activities, which Jamie covered through different programs. And so I'm really trying to understand what's the availability to even accommodate these additional commercial activities? Because if someone were to apply, let's say we implement this process, you would be looking at a very constrained schedule.
No, Mayor Flagger, that is a great question. And I think it's dependent upon the activity that, that is being requested to be offered. As an example, some of the fitness bootcamps, sometimes for working moms or working dads that maybe want to come out in the, I would say, non-peak times. Those are definitely, this process would help facilitate some of those uses. And again, I think this mechanism would help because there would be a process that they would have to apply. And if all of the requests are during, I would say, some of those peak times, which tend to be right after school in that four to seven timeframe, that is something that we would want to balance because we do with our, with our own programs have some there. But we also want to balance that. That is probably also a time that regular general use by the public would want to occur as well too. So we would want the ability to know what, what interest there is. And then that's the other part that I think would be important to highlight is that timeline is, we want to look at this on a quarterly basis so that if we, if we implement a permit for a use and we're noticing that schedule-wise it is not working, we would have the ability and opportunity to reevaluate that on a regular basis so that we could adjust with either use, seasonal use, or even to feedback that we may receive.
And my last question, in benchmarking other jurisdictions, did you see any permit policies that said essentially, you know, these types of commercial activities are prohibited, but there is an exception process? And I'll, and I'll tell you what I'm thinking. Let's say our policy was more explicit that these activities were prohibited for during COVID, because it was safer to be outside. We could have considered granting an exception to the prohibition policy because, to accommodate all these different groups. Have you seen any policies similar to that where it does allow for, I'm going to call it a COVID-type exception?
If I recall by conversation with our city attorney, I think that is something that the City of Gilroy took a look at. And it was an emergency use that they put in place to allow exceptions for a policy which was put in place. And so that was a direction that the City of Gilroy took. And so I think that is something that we, we could do if another, hopefully not another pandemic hits or something that would warrant something where we would need to make exceptions. But I believe that process is something that we could look at.
Thanks. Thanks, Jamie and Donna. So that's it from me. And I don't see any council hands, virtual hands raised for any more questions. So I do want to open it up for discussion. And just to remind council members, you know, they're looking for feedback from us on this proposal of implementing a permit process for commercial activities. And, you know, going back to what Councilmember Liang said, you know, part of that could be, or direction that this goes to the Parks and Rec Commission to review or to further consider it. So I do want to open it up, Vice Mayor. I see your hand. Go ahead.
Sure. I'll be short and sweet and pick up on something that you said, Mayor. And that is, my, my off-the-top-of-the-head reaction to this is given the huge burden on our staff right now in trying to get the community center reopened and rebuilding our Parks and Recreation programming, which has been down for almost three years, I would be inclined to say, let's strengthen our existing ordinance on enforcement, encourage people to go into the planned programming process that the staff manages, and maybe allow for some emergencies based on, you know, public health and whatever other emergency orders might, might arise. But my sense right now is, right now is not the time to tackle this. It's a time to say, you know, let's go take care of some other business that we need to take care of. For one thing, I don't even think that the cost of the permits that we're talking about would cover the amount of staff time it takes to do this. And I, and that greatly concerns me.
I was on mute. Thanks, Vice. Thanks, Vice Mayor. Who would like to go next? Councilmember Meadows.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to pick up on where the Vice Mayor went because that's, she suggested a very practical approach. Because I was writing down all the things I'd want to know. If we sent this back to Parks and Rec, which we could still do? And, you know, who's using, who's used it historically? The, you know, the fee structure? Because I completely agree with the Vice Mayor that fee structure is certainly not going to help what our cost recovery project is going to yield. So I, I do think that, you know, it's easy to jump on these things and say we want to understand them and all that. But given her excellent point about prioritization, let's just take the practical approach for now. And how can we strengthen this just to give us the ability to have some enforcement? And then work on it thoroughly when we can, when we actually have the staff bandwidth to, to take care of it? And maybe it does go to Parks and Rec for a tweak of what that, you know, practical stopgap measure is. But anyway, so I agree with the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Meadows. Councilmember Liang.
I concur as well with the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Meadows. The one concern I have is because so many people want to be outdoors, I would be concerned about commercialism taking over our park space with, and limiting public use when our goal is to ensure that the public have access to their own parks. So that was my concern. And I think the direction that the Vice Mayor gave is the correct direction and will be available to the public use. So thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Liang. Councilmember Weinberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, I'm afraid I have to disagree with my colleagues, and this is why. The current municipal code says, and I'm quoting, Section 9.24.030A1. This is the last sentence of that section. And again, I'm quoting, "Commercial activities or special events for which permits have been issued by the city may be permitted in parks." End of quote. Because that's already on the books, there is an implication that commercial activity right now is allowed if there's a permit. The proposed legislation that, that we have in front of us in, in the, in the ordinance attached to the staff report simply sets forth a mechanism whereby permits would be issued. If the council wants to come back and, and consider the wisdom of that policy, I think that that's fair. I, I think that having limited permitted activity in parks is probably okay. I'm having a hard time seeing what the difference is between MVLA using our parks and how that's different from a karate class taking place in a park. But putting that aside, the reality is, the code implies that permitted commercial activities are allowed in the parks. But there's no mechanism that explains how those permits are to be issued. I like the idea of putting at least in place temporarily the proposed ordinance 9.24.040 because it explains what permits are required. And, and I like the idea of having something in place right away that's going to require a contract, there's going to be indemnity, there's going to be all the things that protect the city in place in order to sort of patch that hole that, the section that I quoted kind of leaves for us.
Thanks, Councilmember Weinberg. I can quickly address, so based on the discussion, I think on the section you cited that has the broad statement about commercial activities, if, if we go in the direction that majority of council has indicated already, that would also need to be revised. So I think staff would have to look at the entire ordinance and figure out what terms do we need to revise to reflect the direction of council. So thanks for flagging that section because I think if any direction is given tonight, it's not just, you know, solely focused on one section. It's looking at the ordinance and all the relevant terms in its entirety to make sure whatever direction we give tonight is reflected in the ordinance.
And that's for the, and for me is the primary person who needs to look at it, right?
Right. And then for the MVLA, wait, I see the city attorney with her hand raised. Go ahead, I was going to address the MVLA point, but go ahead, City Attorney.
No, what I'm saying is that section in the, for the commercial activities with a special event permit, that special event, you know, it probably could have been better drafted or something. But that's our special event permit for use of public property. So if it's over 150 people, that's how we do art in the park. That's how we do concerts in the park. That's how, and they get the special event permit through the police department. So if they're closing a street like downtown, they get those. If they're, if they close down the park for the Glorious Fourth or something like that, I believe they get the permits through the police department. So, and they have all the insurance and all of that requirement. That's my understanding. I, I don't, I think Donna would, that's what I understand that means.
That is correct. And then with the private, so Councilmember Weinberg, I want to make sure I'm, I'm addressing some of the concerns you raise as part of the discussion. So for example, the karate group that I think was mentioned, you know, they could work with staff to have a similar relationship. I mean, the staff outlined the different contractual relationships that you can have with the city. So that, they could still fall under one of those relationships, but not the separate type of commercial activities. Where basically they're like an independent party. So I wanted to make sure that distinction was clear. So go ahead, Councilmember Weinberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Just in response to what the city attorney said, I, I think that we're talking past each other. Special events, permits for special events are covered by an entirely different section in the code. That's in Section 9.25. What I quoted was language from the section entitled Prohibitive Activities in the Park. So, so since we have under prohibitive activities in the park, just so we're all clear, the code implicitly says, if you have a permit, you can, you can perform commercial activities in the park. But how you get that permit, how much the permit costs, that's where there's a hole, that's what's not defined.
Right, and Councilmember Weinberg, I, I know staff is taking notes. And I do think if the direction is what the majority has indicated so far, it has to be that they also look at those sections to ensure consistency throughout the ordinance as we talk about commercial activities and permitting those. I will go last. I, I agree with councilmembers Liang and Meadows and the Vice Mayor in that, you know, for now, I think we should strengthen the enforcement and make clear it's prohibited. I would ask staff also to look at the Gilroy ordinance to see how they frame that exception for emergencies. I know, you know, the governor has lifted the emergency order for the most part. There's still some remaining sections. But, you know, if, if, if this were ever to happen again, hopefully not, I would want us to have some kind of exception mechanism that allows these groups to be able to use our parks. And so I think at least four of us, and I, and Councilmember Weinberg's direction is also, I, I think, part of it, which is look at the entire ordinance. So if I, I don't see any more hands, I want to go to staff because I know Mr. Kildare is going to tell me to go to staff to make sure they understand what the direction is.
Thank you, Mayor.
I know you so well, Mr. Kildare. Ms. Leggy or Ms. Chu?
Sorry, I was taking a little bit to come off mute. Thank you, Mayor Flagger. I think it does, the direction does make sense. It looks like you want to expand it at least a lot. Give us the mechanism to enforce. And so to look at that. But I think as a whole hearing that we do need to look at the, at the ordinances in its entirety to make sure that there is consistency there.
Yes. And then the only part I would add, Councilmember Liang, I see your virtual hand raised, go ahead.
Thank you so much. The other thing is, like we can do in other municipal codes, is I did see that sentence. And what we should be doing is having it refer to 9.25. So that sentence, after that sentence is mentioned, it should be referring that people can see the other municipal code that better helps clarify what needs to be done to a permitted process. And we have done so in other areas of our municipal code.
Thank you, Councilmember Liang. So it sounds like staff understands our direction. And I do want to thank them again for bringing this forward, really appreciate it. And so with that, I don't see any more hands. I will go ahead and adjourn our study session. And we will, we will start our city council regular meeting in five minutes. Thank you.